Good evening and welcome to the Wakefield School Committee Meeting of June 13th, 2017. We'll begin by calling this meeting to order and reading our mission statement. The mission of the Wakefield Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students to be lifelong learners who are meaningful contributors to society and meet their academic, social, civic, and physical potential. And with that, we go into our public comment period. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will move into our Student Advisory Council, which I don't believe we have tonight. And we will go into the recognition of retirees. Dr. Smith, please.
Okay, so earlier this evening, the school committee hosted a reception to honor and thank our faculty and staff who are retiring at the end of this school year. So along with a delicious buffet of appetizers provided by the Warrior Cafe, each retiree received a yellow rose and a signed book of their choice that will be donated to the school library in their name. So I'm honored tonight to have this opportunity to say just a few words about each retiree. And I think I'll have you stand, I don't want to embarrass anyone, but why don't we have all the Woodville teachers stand together, stand together, and then just maybe wave when I talk to you about you. First of all, I feel badly, but Mary Ellen Russell was not able to come this evening. She has bronchitis, but she was at the retirement party the other night. And she just, what I said about Mary Ellen the other night is she represents the class, dignity, and professionalism of the teachers of the Wakefield Public Schools. For 34 years, she's given her heart to her students, her friendship to her colleagues, and her dedication to the families of Wakefield. It's almost mind-boggling to think about how many children she has taught to read and to love learning at the very beginning of their school years. So, Mary Ellen, if you're watching at home, congratulations and thank you. So Kathy Shay, just wait so they can see who you are. Kathy Shay has been in the Wakefield Public Schools since 2001, teaching our first graders. Most often, when I visit Kathy's classroom, she's surrounded by children as she reads a story, patiently listening to their questions, ideas, and then responding with her gentle, caring voice. Kathy's personal strength, commitment, and perseverance have been an inspiration to all of us. Congratulations, Kathy. And this is Mary Rose Tarr. Mary Rose is an unsung, paraprofessional hero of the kindergarten classroom, who gives so much of herself every day with very little fanfare, but has had a profound effect on the lives of our little ones year after year. She is the other half of the Muriel team and a great friend to all of her colleagues. Congratulations, Mary Rose. And then there's Muriel Campbell, with her infectious smile and comparable energy and unmitigated joy for teaching. Not only is Muriel a rock star in the kindergarten classroom, but she's truly the rock of the Woodville School, standing by and for all that is wonderful about the Woodville community. I also had the distinct honor of knowing her as a mom when I was blessed to have her daughters. And her daughter Caitlin led my marching band at Wakefield Memorial High School as drum major back in the day. And she's really a wonderful mom, too. So congratulations to Muriel. And I'll have, next, if we can have Carol stand up from the Galvin Middle School. And Carol has been the mainstay of the Galvin Middle School for 20 years, most of which she has spent in the hub of the action, in the main office. Multitasking is her specialty, effortlessly managing office tasks, phones ringing, and visitors that would make most of our heads spin. Known for her ability to organize the best retirement party ever, everyone is looking forward to finally return the favor and celebrate Carol, to thank the woman who has literally kept the Galvin Middle School running for two decades. Congratulations, Carol. And the common thread of these educators is the great love they've shared with our students. And so thank you to all of you. And then next is Margot Periello. Is Margot in the back? So Margot is the principal of the Doyle Early Childhood Center. So if you want to know the impact that an excellent principal can have on a school, all you have to do is visit the Doyle. It is the happiest place on the planet, as my assistant superintendent Doug Lyons always loves to say. The children are laughing, reading, exploring, and learning, all under the expert care of their teachers. The faculty and staff at the Doyle are consummate professionals, working diligently before, during, and after school to meet the individual needs of every child while providing a safe and nurturing environment in which they can learn and grow. This kind of culture in a school is not a coincidence. It's the craftsmanship of an exceptionally skilled leader and role model. The Doyle has taken on Margot's personality in so many ways. She models the professionalism, love, commitment, and care that we see from the staff in her school. She models the laughter and learning and inclusion you see in the behaviors of the children in her school. Margot's not only the principal, she's the beating heart of the Doyle Early Childhood Center, the happiest place on the planet. So congratulations to you, Margot. And then finally, I'd like to acknowledge two educators who are unable to attend tonight, but have selected a book to donate. And I'd like to congratulate Mr. Michael Bennett, a high school biology teacher, and Ms. Sue Seabeking, the Dahlberg School Nurse. I've known both of these professionals for a very long time and wish to thank them both for the tremendous impact they've made on the Wakefield Public Schools. And again, I just, I think, you know, I would like to maybe end off by just saying, on the behalf of the Wakefield Public Schools and a generation of children who have benefited from this great love, thank you. And we wish you a well-deserved retirement and happiness ahead. Thank you. So can we take a quick photo before we do anything else? Take it, yellow flower. Come on into the middle of the, all of us together, to the middle section over here. And our professional photographer Mike Darrell.
The high-def cameras can get you better.
Is that what I did? I do want to make sure. Let's get all of them, all of you to the middle. Woodville, four in the middle, Carol and Margot, Mike, yes. Bye, honey.
Muriel, a promise.
Thank you so much. It was absolutely wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you for everything.
Anyway, thanks to see you.
Okay. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Piffeling for our budget items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the budget items, the budget reports are in your packet. There's nothing major to report. We're still working through the end of the month. Our biggest payroll of the year occurs next Thursday. So at that point, we'll have a better understanding. But we have seen some preliminary numbers out of those reports. We started running the payroll for that already, and everything looks favorable. So we will not have a budget issue, and we didn't, we didn't think we would, but we always like to wait for that last payroll to run. So everything seems pretty good. Obviously, throughout the year, we've had issues with some of our transportation lines, some of our substitute lines. But we've been saved by some of ours utility lines. So at this point in time, there's nothing overly concerning unless there's any questions from the committee. And then just on the revolving accounts, everything, again, still looks healthy, in better position than we were last year in most of our accounts. Not that any of them were in top position last year, but again, everything looks very healthy from our standpoint. Circuit breaker, we are still waiting for our final payment. That usually comes in on the last day of June. So we should receive that. No anticipated cuts or anything. So we should be good there. The next item I have is the, that we are proposing our fiscal year '18 user fees. In your packet, you will see user fee proposal for tuition for the Doyle Early Childhood Center and bus fees for our students. In addition, there's also all of the athletic user fee proposals and the standards with the Wakefield Academy and our school lunch. So there were no changes to Wakefield Academy, our school lunch. Athletics and performing arts went down as we had presented in the budget. And there was a slight increase for tuition at the Doyle Early Childhood Center, as well as the bus fees. Modest increases, just to cover our increases in salaries as well as contract for our bus transportation.
All right, and we have a motion. We can start with the Doyle tuition.
I move the school committee to lay on the table the Doyle school tuition for a period of two weeks for consideration at the June 27, 2017, school committee meeting.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Morgan.
In our packet, we had some other districts comps. What were those districts? They seemed pretty random when I looked at it.
Yeah, so I had, I was not having success at this time of year getting our typical responses from our typical DART surrounding and SEEM districts. So I did put out on our statewide listserv a request for information, hoping that I could gather at least enough comps to make it understandable that, you know, where we stand with other districts, although they may not be our surrounding. There are some surrounding in here, but they're just not all of the surrounding that we typically get, nor all of the DART districts. So I just thought it would be, since I couldn't get what we typically provide for information, at least this was something that was useful information, some good data points.
Okay. Motion's made in second. All in favor? Passing unanimously. Thank you. So we'll vote on both of those at our next meeting in two weeks. Okay, Mike, the job descriptions.
So I have three new job descriptions that I've been asking for approval of tonight. The first one is a transportation dispatch coordinator. This position was in the budget but not spelled out as we typically spell out new positions. This was part of our anticipated changes to some of our out-of-district transportation routes, some of our local routes to SEEM Collaborative, up to Beverly, some of our local transportation routes that we could do ourselves. The cost, as presented in the budget earlier this year, has gotten quite extensive, quite high, from our transportation provider to do a lot of these van routes for us. So after analyzing it, and we went through this in the budget presentation, after analyzing what we could do ourselves, we felt that we could, we could cut $100,000 out of the budget. Now, I say cut $100,000, we presented it that way, but what we were going to need to add to the budget was much more than $100,000. So it actually brought us just back into line with what we've been in the past. But this is the first step of what could be more, but it's the first step, it's kind of a baby step, if you'll take it. So the first position that I'm asking for approval is the, or the job description is actually what we're looking for approval on, is the transportation dispatch coordinator. And this person would be based out of central office and work closely with Maria Sareo. This position is really critical because we're going to hire, as you'll see next, two van drivers. This person will actually act as the spare or substitute van driver. So if one of them is out absent, we always have that person. If we're going to undergo this transportation in-house, we need to make sure that we can service kids every day of the week and not just, you know, we can't do it tomorrow, so parents have to find a way. That doesn't work. So this is a critical position for us, so I'd ask that you approve that. The second position, or the second job description is for the 7D van driver. A 7D is a specific criteria for a motor vehicle operator, and it has to do with transporting students and pupils. It's a 7D van is the one with the flip-up signs that you see, or sometimes they're mounted on there. They've got escape hatches, and they're very safe, they're much safer vehicles than just your standard, typical minivan-type environment. So, and then the third position would be the Wakefield Academy and Facilities Clerk. This one was actually spelled out in the budget. This is to assist us with payroll, accounts receivable, accounts payable for the Wakefield Academy, and also to help us with our building rental from a standpoint, it's primarily for Wakefield Academy, but on a smaller scale, building rental to help us with invoicing, showing the property, doing quotes for our organizations in the community that want to use our facilities. So this is something that we've been asking for for years, and we found a way to do it without impacting the local budget.
Mike, we've got a motion for these three positions.
I move the school committee to approve the job descriptions of transportation dispatch coordinator, 7D van driver, and Wakefield Academy and Facilities clerk, as presented.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Passing unanimously. Thank you.
And I have a few gifts. The first gift is a $5,000 donation from the Wakefield Track Boosters, and that was to fund two assistant coaches for the 2017 very successful spring track season.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this gift?
Move the school committee to accept with gratitude the donation of $5,000 from the Wakefield Track Boosters Club, the funds for two assistant coaches for the 2017 spring track season.
Made in second. Any discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
The next gift is from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Northern District Attorney, District Attorney's Office, Middlesex District Attorney's Office. It's a $500 gift to help fund end-of-year activities for the class of 2017.
I move the school committee to accept with gratitude a donation of $500 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Northern District Attorney, Middlesex District Office, to help fund the end-of-year activities for the class of 2017.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Passing unanimously. Thank you.
And the final item that I have for this evening, the superintendent's office received a request from Ms. Deborah Beasley. She is the relative of Sean Beasley, who is the namesake of the Beasley Field out back, the track and football fields. She has presented us with evidence that the dedication was for the Sean F. Beasley Track. So she's asking for the sign to be updated, and she has offered to pay for that. But as part of the naming rights, we do need to approve this, we need to at least seek approval from the committee before we can move any further. So the request is from Mrs. Beasley to rename the field from the Beasley Track and Field to the Sean F. Beasley Track and Field.
Remove the school committee to approve the name change on the Beasley Field signage from Beasley Field to Sean F. Beasley Track and Field, as presented.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Chris.
Just that, while I'm sure that they would like to have our stamp of approval, does this not have to go to the Board of Selectmen?
That would be the next step. Correct.
So just, could you explain what's entailed here in terms of the sign and how it's being paid for?
Yep, so the front of the sign, the front of the...
I see the picture that you provided. Yeah, it's great.
And then the back also. So we also did go to the savings bank because they have some signage on this also, and they have no objection. The proposal is that the Beasley family would pay the cost to re-sign the sign, re-sign the...
Re-letter.
Re-letter the sign.
Re-letter, okay. So that's all that's necessary, just the re-lettering?
Well, I think there's some panels that need to be replaced or somehow updated. I don't know if it's just a simple re-lettering, the panels have to come down and new ones have to go up. But they did receive quotes for that from Sidella Sign in town here. And all total is probably close to $4,000 in updates that would need to be done, that the Beasley family has proposed as part of this request.
Okay, motion's made in second. All in favor? Passing unanimously. Thank you. And that's all for you, right, Nick?
That is, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we've got consent agenda. So do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the April 26, 2017, and May 23, 2017, school committee meetings? And accept the minutes from the May 12, 2017 Finance and Facilities Subcommittee meeting, as presented?
So moved.
Okey-dokey. Motion's made in second. All in favor? Any discussion? Ms. Morgan?
No.
All in favor? Unanimous, thanks. Okay. Chairman's comments. The only thing I have is the school committee meeting schedule is in all of your packets. I just wanted to put that out before all of us tonight. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Okay, so first, we have the Wakefield Academy Year End Review, and Director Jeff Boyd is here to do that presentation for us tonight.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. It's always a pleasure to be here and talk about Wakefield Academy, especially when things are going well, which I like to think they are. Just a little bit of information about this year. We've made some significant changes, improvements, expansions for the academy this year, and we hope to continue to do so next year. Before and after-school programs have remained predominantly the same. They're at each elementary school, at the Doyle and the Galvin Middle School. Before-school program starts at 7:00 a.m. to the start of the school day, and the after-school will go till 6:00 p.m. and 5:30 at the Doyle. This includes every single program, no matter which one you go to, includes time for academic support, recreational activities, athletics, arts and crafts, engineering. And we've also implemented a social-emotional component that I'll talk a little bit about later. Currently, we have over 800 kids across the district enrolled in these programs, so we continue to grow, which is great. And the before-school program was new to the Galvin this year, and we're considering bringing it back again next year, seeing what the registrations would suggest. Our enrichment programs, these exist at all different schools other than the Doyle. The high school, we've expanded quite a few programs there. I was fortunate enough to have a lot of my own former students, who must have felt fairly comfortable approaching me, to start new clubs. And the great thing about the high school clubs is that they're really student-driven. All they really require is an advisor instead of an instructor for an adult. And they came up with a bunch of different things, like engineering, I don't know if you've been around the courtyard at the high school, but we had a gardening club that planted all sorts of things last fall, which recently came into bloom this spring. And then at the middle school, we obviously have our big flag football, a lot of athletic-based programs. We had filmmaking this year, and what you see up there are 36 of the over 50 enrichment programs that we were able to offer across the district at those levels. Now, some of the additional supports that we implemented this year, being an after-school program, special education, IEPs, 504s, don't technically or legally always apply to the after-school programs. But needless to say, a lot of those kids who received those supports during the regular school day do attend our programs, and we wanted, in an effort to create consistency from the regular school day to our extended-day programs, we made the decision to hire sped liaisons at the Galvin, Woodville, and Dahlberg Schools. Now, these people acted as kind of a bridge to the regular school day and the after-school, and they were in close communication with the special education teachers that dealt with the students who are on ed plans and were attending our programs. Not to necessarily replicate the ed plans in the after-school program, but to communicate with our staff about different strategies that were successful in the classroom, so that they could be, you know, reflected as closely as possible in the after-school programs. So there was this constant communication back and forth between special education folks at each school and the sped liaison, who would then go on to communicate whatever information they were able to find out with the staff at that particular school. We think it really, really worked out well. They were able to assess student progress throughout the year. And I think that the families of these students really appreciated that, to know that we were offering this extra support for them in the extended-day programs. And next year, we are excited to expand this to the Greenwood, Walton, and Doyle Schools. We'll plan on putting a special education liaison at those three schools as well. And also, we implemented a character-building curriculum. This was run by former Dahlberg teacher and current Galvin teacher Brianna Semenza. She approached me, she and I had a lot of the same feelings about this, the district's initiative on social-emotional learning. We thought that the after-school programs would be a tremendous vehicle to get some of those messages across and provide kids with the opportunity to kind of have discussions and be exposed to some of those topics. So we targeted all third grades across the district, where Brianna would visit every third grade for eight weeks, one day a week, and had an hour and a half lesson activities set up for them. We targeted the third grade because ultimately, the third grade is going to be the leaders of their elementary schools next year, and hopefully, they can take what they learn from these sessions and apply them throughout the rest of their middle school and high school careers. Our plans for the summer, we're going to go back and do what we pretty much did last year, the academic enrichment program, which will be for all incoming first through eighth graders, from 8:00 a.m. to noon, Monday through Thursday, with Friday field trips. We have a lot of the same field trips from last year that were very well-received. We have a whale watch, we're going to go to Sturbridge Village this year, we'll wrap up at Canterbury Lake. So it's a five-week program where kids will have instruction, enrichment instruction on math, ELA, science, and engineering, PE, and art, every single day. Not what you would see during a regular school year, you know, the folks that are going to be, you know, teaching these classes know that, you know, textbooks are not allowed, homework is not allowed. These kids, the goal is to have them go home to their parents and talk about what a great experience they have, and their parents to say, wow, you actually learned something too. So it's a fun program with all those different subjects, and we're going to continue to work with the recreation department to offer extended-day options beyond the conclusion of our program at noon. The integrated pre-K program is a great program for current Doyle students, will be integrated with some of the kids in Mrs. Bev Elsowitz's class. It's kind of a cool thing what they do, they bring all of the Doyle equipment over to the Galvin, and they kind of transform the space at the Galvin into what you might see at the Doyle, only it's a lot cooler at the Galvin than it would be at the Doyle, so it works out pretty nicely. And we're also going to offer some supplemental summer menu options this year. Like I said, our regular program will end at noon. This year, what we're going to do is we're going to have additional options open to all students across the district, do not have to be enrolled in our summer program to participate. Really, kind of, you know, interest-specific things. We have art, we have boxing, cooking, steam-based programs. A former Wakefield High School graduate wants to come back, and she's going to be running a complimentary girl empowerment program, which is what you see there as self, and a dance program as well. And we're also, based on some feedback I got from parents, there is a two-week gap between the end of the school year and the start of our summer program, and a lot of parents require childcare during that time. So we are teaming with the recreation department for those two weeks to offer parents a childcare option that will be run predominantly through the civic center where the recreation department currently resides. Had a few fundraisers this year. These are always a lot of fun. We had back-to-school night movies to allow parents to attend back-to-school nights without having to worry about securing childcare at home. All the kids came, and we had a movie on at every school, and the parents went and did their back-to-school thing and picked them up at the end. We held a professional wrestling event, and hopefully, some of you are aware of, over at the Galvin Middle School. It was very well-attended, very well-received, and a whole heck of a lot of fun to put together, watching it afterwards on TV, the station that they have. It was really cool to see all the elementary and middle school kids come out and really get into it, and it was even more fun to watch some of our staff get involved to some degree. Nobody more than our football coach, Mr. Cummings, who got in there and got to have his WrestleMania moment and did a great job with all that. And tomorrow, we're going to be doing a dodgeball tournament as part of a PTO event where they have a fundraiser going on down at the lake, and all the proceeds from both of those will go directly to the Galvin PTO. You know, a lot of this stuff has enabled us to make some significant contributions back to the district. Last year, we were able to provide the district with brand-new digital radio system. This was in replacement of the current or previous two-way radio system, where antennas were installed across the district, enabling administrators to have district-wide communication with one another in time of a crisis. This, I thought, we got to see in action the first time, most recently, when our crisis teams were called into action, and it was really nice to be able to just have a walkie-talkie on you as an administrator and be able to communicate with the other administrators across the district without having to find a telephone or a computer. We did some work over the summer at the Walton School, just a lot of paint and a lot of volunteers, and that outdoor space, which was kind of depressing, we really brightened it up. We painted a kickball court out there, four square courts for the kids. We redid the map of the United States. So it's a much more inviting space, which hopefully, and I'm sure will be torn apart very soon, but while it lasted, you know, it was fun for the kids, they really enjoy it. And coming this fall, we're going to work with Ms. Atoli over at the Woodville School and Jeff Weiner from Technology, and we're going to do a little bit of work to transform to a degree the Woodville Library into a media center consisting of some new technology. go directly to the Galvin PTO. You know, a lot of this stuff has enabled us to make some significant contributions back to the district. Last year, we were able to provide the district with brand-new digital radio system. This was in replacement of the current or previous two-way radio system, where antennas were installed across the district, enabling administrators to have district-wide communication with one another in time of a crisis. This, I thought, we got to see in action the first time, most recently, when our crisis teams were called into action, and it was really nice to be able to just have a walkie-talkie on you as an administrator and be able to communicate with the other administrators across the district without having to find a telephone or a computer. We did some work over the summer at the Walton School, just a lot of paint and a lot of volunteers, and that outdoor space, which was kind of depressing, we really brightened it up. We painted a kickball court out there, four square courts for the kids. We redid the map of the United States. So it's a much more inviting space, which hopefully, and I'm sure will be torn apart very soon, but while it lasted, you know, it was fun for the kids, they really enjoy it. And coming this fall, we're going to work with Ms. Toli over at the Woodville School and Jeff Weiner from Technology, and we're going to do a little bit of work to transform, to a degree, the Woodville Library into a media center consisting of some new technology that teachers and students will be able to access as part of their instruction. And that's all I got for you guys.
Anything from the committee?
Congratulations on growing this to 800 students.
Thank you.
That's all. It's quite the undertaking.
We have a great staff, they're great with the kids, and yeah, they have a good time.
Could you talk a little bit about the budget in terms of how, you know, how and why you were successful in being able to put some revenue back into the system?
Yeah, I mean, just I think management, personnel management is a big piece of it, staffing appropriately, we're still able to maintain our numbers, which we like to keep at a 10-to-1 ratio for students to adults. And just the expansion, I think, of our enrichment programs has really brought in a lot of revenue. If, I think, I feel like the majority of the income prior to my arrival was coming from those before and after-school programs, which still, you know, seemed like they should have brought in quite a bit, but I think just expanding it with the enrichment piece and the new summer piece has really kind of taken us to another level.
Do you think the fee structure you have now is the right one, and what kind of feedback do you get from parents?
Yeah, you know what, I've yet to, I've yet to have anybody give any pushback on the fee structure, and I think if you look at the other districts around us, you'd notice that Wakefield is much more affordable than most of those. I know that the town that I'm currently living in, one of the conflicts that we're running into also is over enrollment, and they're actually not taking any more students. Somebody who has a incoming kindergartner, this creates conflicts for myself, and I think that's a huge thing for us here in Wakefield. You know, we don't turn people away, we continue to take them in throughout the year as needed, and rather than cutting people off at a certain number, we will simply just find more staff to accommodate and keep that ratio where it needs to be.
All right, thank you, Jeff.
I think it's also important to note that those three contributions that Mr. Boyd mentioned are things that really enhance the Wakefield Academy programming, and they also, you know, we're able to really utilize them. So like the walkie-talkie system, the radio system is something, they now have those, that kind of safety mechanism in the after-school programming and before-school programming, which had been a problem for them, but we can use them during the school day. The Walton program helps both the, you know, academy and the playground during the day, and then the Woodville Library, the learning comments will definitely help the program as well as during school day, so it's kind of that nice duel.
Yep, these investments will all be, you know, they'll all come back to benefit the kids at Wakefield Academy, and we try to come up with ways to invest our money so that it benefits not just us, but everybody else, and I think these were some pretty good choices, and hopefully accessible by everybody.
Quick question. Do people get their information? I mean, I get your emails all the time, because I have, you know, a kid in middle school. But generally, like, how is the information about your programs disseminated?
We have a few different methods of doing it. I mean, there's stuff sent home on a monthly basis from each site coordinator at each school with updates on upcoming programs. We have flyers, like hand-paper flyers, that will go out, which is also included in the emails that you get. As you mentioned, I tend to send a lot of email blasts out with new programs, so using those emails is a huge way for me to communicate the things that are going on. We've rebuilt, with the help of Jeff Weiner, our Wakefield Academy website, where you can access all of our materials through there, and we also have a Wakefield Academy Facebook page, which reaches, I believe, over 500 people. So any new things that are coming up having to do with Wakefield Academy, we have a few different ways to get the word out there, and so far, I think it's been pretty effective.
Okay, good, thank you.
And maybe you're going to get to that, because there's one thing we haven't talked about yet was this, but we just got an email about this, this summer reading and math requirement now. Is that something, like, when you talk about your summer things, are you trying to incorporate that?
It's funny you should ask that, that's actually kind of in the developmental phase right now for this summer. I'm working with a teacher over at the Dolbear School who wants to do a class, a program, call it what you want, that will be implemented as part of the academic enrichment program. So the kids would go to math, they'd go to ELA, this would be, I didn't put it up there because it's not been confirmed yet, but this would be another thing that the kids would go to, where they would be able to focus on their summer reading. I'm having them talk, this teacher's going to be talking with Chris Goslin, who I know is kind of the go-to at the elementary school, and at the middle school, we have Kelly, I can't think of her last name right now, but she's been great, she's helped us get the titles of the books that we need, and they're kind of keeping us in the loop about what the assessment's going to be. So we're actually in the planning process right now of implementing that piece into our summer program, where parents will be able to know that they're going to come to the summer program, their kid's going to come, and they're going to take care of everything required of the summer reading. The math is not something we've gotten into the development yet, but certainly something that we're going to keep our eye on moving forward.
I just was just thinking, when I saw that email come out, that, you know, the summer, summer reading isn't new, but the additional math requirement is new to me.
I'll have that on the agenda in our next meeting, everything about summer learning.
Okay.
I can give you all the details.
An opportunity to help them get through it.
Someone who taught for a long time, it would be a huge, huge help to have it be part of that summer program, and that's exactly what we're going to try and do with the reading piece.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and then I wanted to say thank you to Principal Metropolis for hanging in there, just in case anyone has questions on the next two agenda items, which are the Student-Parent Handbook and the Substance Abuse Screening Intervention and Referral Plan. So first, the Student-Parent Handbook, I believe we have a motion.
Yeah, so we're going to change the motion from the motion sheet, we're going to, I would ask for a motion to lay on the table the Student-Parent Handbook for a period of two weeks for consideration at the next meeting.
So moved.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded.
So the reason I asked Mr. Tiro this evening if we could put it on the table for two weeks is, in my own reviewing of the handbook, I started to notice some things. Number one, just a few errors and edits that I want to bring to the principal's attention and get them fixed up, but just some consistency on certain aspects of the books. I did notice that, I think the elementary books call the Student-Parent-Teacher Handbook, the middle schools call the Student Handbook, and the high schools call the Student-Parent Handbook, and I thought, maybe some consistency, you know, who's our target audience and have it be the same. I think we need to update our mission statement in the books to our newest mission statement. We need to check our nondiscrimination statements. I noticed a couple of those are outdated as well, and after, we recently went through the coordinated program review, and a piece of it was to make sure that our nondiscrimination statements are all up to date with current regulations. School committee members' names, a couple of them, and even my own name, I'm listed as Kimberly J. Smith Jr. in one of the books. Which is great, but, and also the roles, Doug Lyons has about 20 different versions of what his official titles are, in terms of Title IX and Horizon, so just want to get those cleaned up and consistent across all the books. And then, one of the things I'm thinking about and would love your feedback on either tonight or over the two-week period, is what school committee policies, if any, actually are included in the book? And my current thinking is to have the link to all of the policies on the website, so they can go look at all of them. This is where you find them, this is where you go, but perhaps including maybe two key ones. One would be the Bullying and Harassment Policy Prevention and Intervention Plan in the form, the actual copy of it, so that it's right there, and perhaps the other one might be the allergy policy and procedures, kind of two big ones that maybe might be important for people to actually look at right in the book. But that's my first thinking, but I'll take any feedback on that. So those are the pieces, I thought we might just get some consistency across the district as I compared the books. And then, like I say, I noticed a couple of little edits or errors, and a couple of other people have as well, so we can clean those up as well, and any other feedback, it was a lot to digest, so any other feedback that people have, it would give us a couple of weeks to look at it.
Mr. Callen.
I think we do need the extra time, because it was a lot to try to get through a 250-page packet in one weekend. Well, I understand the thought about having some policies in the book. The danger that we need to consider is that if we update a policy, then it's one way in one place and different than another, and it's like a balancing act that we need to at least be thoughtful about. I'm not sure which way I fall on that. I can see both sides of the argument. I do appreciate the high school book streamlining. We've probably eliminated 25 pages worth of text. Yeah, so, you know, because if you make it too cumbersome, people can't find anything. And it doesn't need to be that complicated, you know, the simpler, I think, is better. So I like that direction that we're headed in. You know, we may still need to tweak some of the editing and find words that are, you know, misplaced or whatever, but I like the direction we're going in. But I'm really unsure about the policies, because I...
Yeah, that's a really good point. I mean, if we go the route of just the link and maybe we call attention, like, please make sure you read the bullying, harassment, or something like that, like maybe just call attention to those two and say, make sure you're up to date, but you're right, the danger of actually putting the policy in is, one of the problems we've had, is old policies stay in there, and they live from year to year, and it gets very confusing unless we're really attentive to it, so...
The intent was to have the policies reside in one spot.
Yeah.
So that if it's updated, it's updated, and not kind of scattered about that you lose an update at some place.
Anyone else?
Okay.
I just think we need to vote on that motion, so it's been made and seconded. All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you.
Okay, and then the last thing is, I asked Mr. Metropolis if he would write a one-page overview of the new substance abuse prevention screening process, and he really did an outstanding job on it, I was just complimenting him tonight, saying, "It's just an extremely clear, one-page snapshot on what we are doing and how we're implementing in the Wakefield public schools." You may recall that back in the fall, I believe it was, Brendan Kent and Catherine Dinger came in to describe the law, what all districts were expected to do, but at that time, we didn't have the details. So he was able to put that in the one-page overview, and just a very quick snapshot is, the decision was made to utilize the school nurses for the administration of the screening. Both nurses and administrators have been trained, they'll be using what's called the Craft II screening tool, and I thought it was important that Mr. Metropolis noted that the goal of the screening is not only to find ways to support students whose responses trigger further intervention and support, but to validate students whose responses indicated that they're not engaged in using or abusing substances. That's an important part of the program. And where it's about prevention, the two grades that were selected were grades seven and nine. It's a highly confidential process, and the, both schools, the middle school and high school, will be generating a letter to go home to all parents or guardians, talking about the process and the screening tool. And those are just kind of some of the highlights of that one-page snapshot, but we just wanted to be available to you if you had any specific questions about it.
Will parents be allowed to opt-out?
Yep, it's part of the state law, if the parents are in a position to opt-out, if they like, and that would be in the letters that Mr. Collington and I generate to send home.
Okay, and then have you, I assume you have, but have you developed a protocol for those students who do essentially test positive?
So it's actually, we've had an opportunity to meet with people from the Stoneham Public Schools, have implemented a pilot this year, and then in being part of the training for the implementation statewide, I was able to learn that, you know, the screening process is sort of the craft screening questionnaire. It's, there's four questions, and then a fifth question that all students get asked. If any of those trigger a yes, then the question, the person, the nurse, who's asking the questions will go into four more questions. And those four more questions tend to be more of what's called a brief negotiated interview, asking students about essentially their welfare, health and safety associated with substance abuse. And it may not necessarily be their own substance abuse, so that's how the screening tool works, if they could be around it, et cetera. So what, the research has shown in this brief pilot, really a year for some schools, is that about 10% of students who are screened make it to that second level of questions, and then a very small percentage trigger an intervention, which would involve potentially parents and other professionals within the school community. So we do have a protocol that we have in place for that, because it is bound to happen, but we just don't know necessarily, like, what our percentage will look like here in Wakefield. But statewide, from all the pilots, it looks to be about 10% for the negotiated interview, which is really the screener, the person, the nurse, who will be conducting that interview, and then beyond that, you know, whether someone needs a more specific intervention. And that does involve the student agreeing to parent involvement, et cetera, because this is a very confidential process.
Thank you.
Yep.
You know, while I understand it seems appropriate for the nurses to be doing this, I'm also always hearing how overworked they are and how little time they have, so I'm not sure how we're going to get, find them more time.
We have an opportunity in Wakefield which has been fantastic. We have a nurse that floats and supports both the Galvin and the high school, and so, you know, we are busy, and so it's helpful that my nurse, Deb Ryan, who's the nicest person in the world, it is nice that she has the support, but as a principal, and I've talked about this often, really recently, is, it's very important for me to ensure that all students have a connection with an adult in our school. I think, because the nurse is a kind of conduit to all other resources and supports, and any student in any classroom or at any point should have the opportunity to raise their hand and ask to go to the nurse if they're feeling physically ill, or maybe it's something else. A response from a teacher, absolutely yes, without question, doesn't put that student on the spot, so when people raise their hand and say, can I go to the nurse, most kids would think, oh, maybe their stomach's upset.
Rather than, I want to go to the school psychologist.
I really want to go to see my counselor, I need to call my parent, you know, all those things. The nurse is kind of the focal point for that. If we start screening in ninth grade with our nurse, every student will meet the nurse. And I know, you know, Debbie was apprehensive at the beginning because she felt like, wow, am I really going to have to be able to go through this? Is it going to be possible? And we're not going to try to rush it and get it all done in three days. I mean, we're going to see how it works for us and expand on, you know, best practices based on what we experience. But in four short years, realistically, every student will know Debbie, who she is, will have had a conversation with her, and will feel comfortable going to see her, and then getting what it is that they need beyond that. So for me, yes, I mean, our students meet with their counselors and guidance counselors, some schools in the state, and some districts use guidance counselors as a method for screening, but students should also have a connection with their guidance counselors already. Having a connection to the nurse, for me, is very important, and Debbie agrees, so I think we're going in that direction.
I totally agree that a student asking to go to the nurse draws far less attention.
Right.
And is more unquestioned than any other request. But I just, I'm concerned that we may have to lighten their load in some other areas.
So in having the flow, basically, it's a matter of Mr. Collington and I and our buildings coordinating, so that we can ensure that we have support at both buildings at all times for the needs that we have, and are able to conduct the screenings appropriately as well.
Yeah.
But it's really, you know, it's going to take some time for us to figure it all out.
You don't know until you try, I understand.
That's exactly right, yeah.
Can I just make a comment on that?
Sure.
Because the school that I'm at, we've piloted this, and frankly, we do have the counselors and the nurses, we all sort of pitch in and do the whole thing, so it's done very quickly, because there's a lot of us there, but it's a really quick screening for 90%. It's maybe three minutes per student. So for the most part, it can actually move pretty quickly, and depends on how you structure, how she's going to get access to the kids, like through, you know, freshman health or something like that.
We have envisioned that she'll be working with wellness classes. All of our students take wellness throughout the entire course of the year, so first semester we'll get the students in freshman year that are enrolled in wellness, second semester, same thing. So it will take the entire year, but like you said, we'll find... So it will take the entire year, but like you said, we'll find those times, and, you know, Debbie has plenty of data as to when she's busiest. Obviously, different times of the year, depends on whether the flu is going around, what have you, but we'll be able to figure out what makes the most sense, and like you said, for a three-minute screening for a class of 15 to 25 students, it's doable, and we'll see how it goes.
Anything else? Great. Thanks for sticking around.
Thank you for sticking around with us. Thank you. And that's it for me.
Okay. Okay, subcommittee reports. Finance and facilities. Mr. Markham.
Excuse me. Thank you. We had a meeting a week ago, Friday, and it was actually a fairly lengthy meeting. We reviewed much of what Mr. Piffling presented tonight in an earlier draft form. We spent a fair amount of time walking through some of the different ins and outs of the tuition proposals and the user fees and athletic fee proposals, and so, and we also had some updates on some of the facilities and matters that were ongoing, as well as got a good sense of what some of the projects that are in the works. So it was a fairly hefty agenda, but it was certainly time very well spent, and the types of materials that you sought tonight in Mr. Piffling's presentation about the fees which we'll be voting on in two weeks from tonight, we really, really pulled a lot of that apart. And the increases are modest, to the extent that there are some, and the reductions in the user fees are reflective of the school committee vote and certainly town meeting and town support to help make those reductions in place. So that's something that has come together nicely. So we certainly, as we'll talk about at the next meeting, but the facilities and finance subcommittee was certainly well behind the recommendation that the administration made tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Markham. One thing I'll also say about our last meeting, is we discussed the idea of appointing a school committee liaison to the permanent building committee. So I wanted to say that tonight, if there's any interest in that amongst a school committee member, if you just want to download with me offline, we can get that on the agenda. So I wanted to mention that tonight.
To talk about the Walton, so they were hiring a project, a new project manager.
Okay. Labor and personnel has not met. Ms. Morgan, policy and planning.
We have a meeting a few weeks early with policy. I'd like to have it on the table tonight, so I would move that the school committee lay on the table policy number 1110, fundraising activities, for a period of two weeks for consideration at the June 27, 2017 school committee meeting.
Second. Okay, motions been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, passed unanimously. Thank you. Future dates and agenda items, our next meeting will be June 27. School committee comments. Mr. Massey.
I'll start today. Thank you.
I'll start, thank you.
Mr. Callen.
Just glad to hear that graduation went so well. I was busy pedaling away, and, you know, Best Buddies did very well. They raised $6 million for Best Buddies with that ride this year, so it was a very worthwhile endeavor as well.
I just wanted to add my congratulations to the Wakefield Memorial High School lacrosse team. I have a history and a passion with that sport, and to know that they won 20 games in a row in such a competitive league is really a remarkable achievement, so congratulations to the coach, the students, the student athletes, and the families that support that team. It's a great, great achievement.
I'm also.
Mr. Markham. I too wanted to congratulate the class of 2017. I wanted to wish well and certainly thank the middle school teachers, the sixth-grade team. Next week is Enterprise City. We missed our annual Enterprise City presentation, I think. Did I miss, we missed it, or, I think we missed it. Anyways, they're going next week.
We looked at the roadmap when we were in...
Right. We had the gift of Boston, but be it as it may, Enterprise City is next week, and so I know this, Mr. Boyd was a former active attendee in the Enterprise City process, but lots of really hard work goes into making that happen for the sixth-grade team, really does a lot of work and puts a lot of time into that. And obviously, our partnership with the savings bank continues to be strong in making that happen. So that's next week, so wishing them all the best.
And I'll just say, so the Wakefield Public Schools and the town of Wakefield have had a few rough weeks with some losses that we've had in the community, and certainly, I know the school committee's condolences and prayers and thoughts go to all of those families and friends who are affected. What I also saw, though, was this community come together in a way that was really amazing and really moving, and I think that was led by the students of the Wakefield Public Schools who came together in an amazing way. So I just wanted to make sure that we mentioned that, and, you know, we're all certainly praying and thanking the Vols at this time. Okay, and with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move the school committee adjourn its meeting of Tuesday, June 13, 2017.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Passed unanimously. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.